Uh, first on tonight's agenda is going to be the review and approval of the previous meeting minutes from December first, twenty twenty five. If y'all can see any changes need to be made.
I think a motion we approve the millions from December first, twenty twenty five. Ask for any.
Motion made by Kevin, second by Ron. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All in favor, motion carried. Uh, next would be public comments, but we got Bob on there. And Bob, would you like to?
Is Bob here?
Is Bob here?
No.
Okay, all right. Bob is not here, so we'll go on and do it. Anybody else in the audience have anything they'd like to bring up in public comments?
Do we need to discuss that? Ed, can you call them to the office?
Um, if we call them up on the desk. Yeah. Tom, did you review any of the photos?
I looked at it. It's just his responsibility to put there.
No.
You're off the team.
So it become a civil matter, a civil matter, right, between neighbors?
Between the neighbors.
All right. Um, is there anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Um, council members, is that my spot? All right, so tonight I would like to nominate a candidate for the open seat for the council. Um, I'm going to nominate Barbara, or Barb. Okay, I'd like to nominate her, so council has any further discussion on that. Barbara? Is there any time of discussion? Yeah, I think I just need a vote from each council member, right? Uh, Cheryl, how would you vote?
Yes.
Chad, how would you vote?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
All right, we've got four vote yes to nominate Barbara for the seat for the council. Then, Barbara, do you accept?
Yes, I do.
All right, Barbara accepts?
Yeah.
I didn't know I had to teach you that. Cool. Thank you, Cheryl.
Yeah.
All right, now we need to swear the oath.
Uh, no, yes. You want to first?
All right, you do. Do I get Barbara's?
Yes.
Barbara? Am I not going to read this one?
Uh, she can read it, or you can read it, and she can read it up, or you go either way. I swear that I worship the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithful discharge. If you need a counsel, let us carve it out case, so help me God, or in this, I do understand the pain and the penalties of perjury.
You just need to sign that. Not you. You doing that now? Okay, clearly not me.
Barbara will have the other one right here.
Okay. Can then she use this to pack it? Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Talking to the table? All right, next will be.
Uh, we got occupancy permits for Dollar General. This was a business for a while. I made the decision to change its management, so we are give over the dependence on their efficient permit, occupancy permit.
The occupants, how long did we have to review that?
One year.
Does it help?
It's like their business license, basically, the same.
I know we do the outcome. I don't remember doing.
This one is mainly for the bigger businesses, case fees.
Oh.
Uh, we thought it was gonna get a.
They just come different times of the year?
No, they're just, and it's just late.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, but it took me a long time to actually go, had to go over the corporate store in Tennessee or something. I'm not exactly.
So there's something that, do we like motion on approving the occupancy permit? Do we review this? Anyone copy?
Just so we can continue doing business.
These are homes that were completed?
Someone like to make a motion? And then we accept the, um, occupancy. Yeah. Motion, all in favor, motion carried. Okay, next one's coming around, our occupancy use permits for three oh four Clay and seven twenty seven Jersey Court in the new subdivision. All the inspections have been performed and passed. Uh, we'll get them to sign their copy and pay their permit fee tomorrow, as it said this person in the morning, so. Right, I didn't know.
No, it doesn't have.
I'll get it back. The Crawford channel?
Is that the corner where there's the one in the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, the two, this one's coming up for sale.
We need to make a motion together. All of us get on the ticket motion.
Make a motion, we approve the occupancy permits for the new subdivision for.
Three oh four Clay and seven twenty seven.
Three oh four Clay and seven twenty seven Jersey Court.
Uh, motion's been made by Kevin, second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All in favor, motion carried.
Um, on the same topic of the development, Jeremiah Johnson with Alco Development reached out to us and he's asking for an extension of their program here to continue to build houses. Five, two degrees or so.
Yeah, it's like that thing for two years.
Two-year extension to continue building. I think when this, I wasn't really involved with the first discussion of that, but there was some kind of time expectation set that there would be some houses built in a time. I don't think they're quite on pace for that, but they have been moving pretty, pretty quickly lately. Uh, they, they made some different reasons that they could, that we were asked, rather than do what I think, if in themselves, for that, I don't know. We definitely want that, and that's what they're asking for, is an extension, two-year extension. Would that, would that extension be like a building permit extension where we needed the permit, or can we just motion to approve?
I think they've been in discussion with the building, there hasn't been a big lag between.
Yeah.
Maybe weather or something.
Yeah. Process.
And I don't even know what the original requirements were.
But they're, they're wanting a two-year extension. I make a motion that we grant a two-year extension to, what's the name of it?
Alco.
Alco Development was the new development of.
Motion's made by Cheryl. Seconded by Barbara. Any further discussion?
You say this part of the grant is like. So, does this affect the grant in any way?
I don't believe so, because they're all tied in our email chain that goes out, and he works with all the grants. I can double check on it, but I don't think it'll affect it at all.
Just make it conditional on it. If it's not. Wh- what grant exactly? Yeah, that's what I was just gonna ask.
I don't remember.
Is it the, is it the one that gives them the, uh, profit? No, I think that's different.
It's the one with the, yeah.
This is the one that allows them to sell at a cheaper price and get the state money back.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I mean, we could, he just, he just reached out and asked him for it. I mean, if you got several questions, we can send more questions on to him.
I like them to keep building that.
Yeah, I think we all are in favor of the projects continuing half of it.
Yeah, questions. My concern was if it would interrupt the grant process, which affects them and the buyers a lot more than it does us.
I hope all of them can make sure.
Really good question. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, all those opposed? All in favor, motion carried.
Okay, and the last one here, um, is a permit application for Arlene Craig to finish shipping container to the storage. That's why I said it's property. It's not typically allowed, it's not allowed according to the regulations. I know we have granted that use on temporary use permit basis, um, if someone was building a house or whatever.
But this is a permanent fixture?
Yes, I asked that she had it.
Where is it located?
Is it commercial, or is it?
Three ten Main Street.
Right on that side of the library.
Oh.
She's wanting to put one in.
Are you sticking it in her yard anywhere?
Didn't use it for storage.
Instead of building a shed or a lot.
Correct. Um, I would, I guess I'm against the regulation, but I'm really, we, we think that this needs to be through, because it also bring, it came up here to us, we, you know, great for you. And then also, I, we do have one out there for temporary use, uh, for timber, so I would check in with him, so he can see what his plans to build ours. He probably.
Do we have a difference between commercial and residential on containers usage? Because the storage facility, uh. The self-storage unit. Yeah, they have like four or five of them now.
Yeah, they built that in there and built the systems, and that was before my time, I was kind of involved in that a little bit.
But we don't have anything on our books for permanent storage containers in your yard, just temporary when you're building or whatever.
Doesn't your code, if it's currently written, prohibit that except for temporary use?
Okay.
And that's if it came up, I'll get you guys to write down temporary use. All right, that's it for them.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you, Dylan.
Did you guys send emails for Dylan?
Did you, did get in your email?
Yeah, I did.
Awesome. All right, this will be the Park Series committee.
Um, so we had two survey posters, one was here at City Hall, and one was at the library, and then we did the online survey also that we talked about last week. Um, at the library, option one had three votes, option two had one vote, option three had seventeen. Here at City Hall, option one had six, option two had one, option three had seven. Online, option one had seven, option two had two, and option three had thirty, making the total to be number one, sixteen votes, number two, four votes, and number three, fifty-four votes.
All right. So we voted number three.
That you have, you have, you have to make a decision.
Number three is the one that has the, the being.
Me, just online itself, say the online votes again.
One, option one had seven votes, option two had two votes, and option three had thirty.
Okay, now my question is. How many people voted in person and online, and voting online was restricted to just one vote versus for household?
Voting online was restricted to one vote per email.
Okay.
But now if they voted online, I just, we didn't get their emails, and I don't know if people voted in the library and in City Hall, I have, I didn't.
Right.
I didn't track.
This is basically just the way to get some of the community's effort, uh, not necessarily a final.
But there's such a large difference in the numbers, even somebody voting twice.
Yeah, option three with one of the last.
Option three.
Give the big plate that.
Right.
So, yeah.
So we just need a motion to go forward with option three? I make that motion.
Motion made by, uh, Cheryl, and seconded by Kevin. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All in favor, motion carried.
Any other part for the?
Thank you.
A lot of work in the house.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next will be Shannon, who has a vote for the police department.
So, um, I, my only, uh, topic is. I haven't had the opportunity to, so I was wanting to find out if you guys were free to carry over. Uh, I have sixty-eight extra hours, and so, um, I wanted to, if you were mind if I take that over to the next meeting, I'm hoping when, uh.
You need, uh, no? To sixty-eight?
That's a hundred and four, does that include the forty?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I changed it, so as of, as of last week, last week, or last check, I had a hundred and four, as of this, this check coming up, I'll have a hundred. That's right, so sixty-eight, so I get whatever I have over, which would be the, the hundred and eight, would be sixty-eight, um. Department have that to use after I get my documents, had me an opportunity to have the vacation. Okay, and to be used during the twenty-six year?
Yeah.
I mean, because we don't want to make this a continuous. Because you have too much, you need to go on vacation.
Did we carry over to last year? Like nobody asked.
Yeah.
How much?
I don't know how much it was, but she is a lot at the beginning of the year.
Try to figure out how much you earned, and how much carried over, and how much was used, and just like carrying over last year's into next year. Is like carrying over last year's into next year.
Well, so just get a good vacation one day.
Yeah. And then next year, I, I don't have a problem with that. Turn it over next year. If we need more calculation, we can go back and do more math and then.
And, and, okay, so you'll have a total of a hundred and eight hours that you're going to roll over because you're forty that you're allowed and the sixty-eight that you have extra. How much do you earn for the year? Is it this four hours check, okay, times twenty-six?
Yep.
Okay. So that'd be two hundred and twelve, two hundred and twelve hours to be used. But you, well, I guess you could save forty carry over. You're gonna have to take a lot of vacation.
We don't have to put the whole amount, we have, we don't put the whole amount, just an extra part of it.
Well, you can approve the whole amount, but you can't carry it over the next time, so it'll be use it or lose it. Not my problem with that.
Someplace they want to do that?
Okay. As Chief Seals is allowed to carry over, to roll over forty hours and she has an extra sixty-eight hours, we will allow her to roll them over into the year twenty-twenty-six, but they must be used in twenty-twenty-six on a use it or lose it basis.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Motion made by Cheryl. Seconded, seconded by Ron. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Next thing, Kevin. All in favor except for Kevin with seats. Uh, motion carried.
Is there any questions? We're going on vacation time, time.
Yes, ma'am.
You're welcome.
All right, Shannon?
Thank you.
Yes, yes. Uh, I can, I can bring it up and follow up or we can. Is it police?
Yeah, okay.
Shannon? We have one other thing, I guess. We discussed a couple meetings ago about Mariah going to a certain position she affected the first of the year. Was it the beginning of the year you wanted to move over or was it?
I was getting with, I was getting with the first meeting, which is.
I got you. You still want to hold off for the first? Oh, you went to the first meeting? I was thinking it was the first, the first. Okay. Okay, look at, I, you still want to hold off till then?
Um, if we want to bring it tonight, one, I don't know, we like. Are you planning to come here and?
Now, thank you Shannon.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have, uh, session person interview. Somebody interviewed.
This is all good for you or not?
It's good.
Um, uh, we have five minutes each, ten minutes each. Two of them. Totally, ten minutes each, now we do a five minute. Work transition period.
Do you want to read your book still?
Yeah.
I'll bring you down. Make sure you give us a little time.
I'm getting a little time out, yeah.
You guys do that.
Yeah.
I make a motion to go into executive session for twenty minutes for, uh, non-elected personnel and interviews with the city council, the mayor, the city clerk, uh, maintenance supervisor, and Tom. And returning back here at nineteen forty-five. Do you want to do that out in a couple minutes?
Nineteen fifty, so we just started here.
Okay.
Two minutes in town. Time to do the motion.
Okay.
Motion's been made by Kevin, seconded by Chad. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All in favor to go into exec, this session, uh, starting at, uh.
We're in executive session.
We were in executive session for 20 minutes with no decisions made. Let me make a motion that we extend an employment offer to Mark Zuckerberg for a position of maintenance, the maintenance one or maintenance two? Motion made by Kevin, seconded by Chad. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All in favor minus Barbara who was abstaining? Motion carried. With that, Mark, would you accept their offer for employment and support? What you're gonna do is you just get with Emily wrecked and then you're gonna walk through the next steps. I think for tonight, we're just gonna fill out one position, right? And so with that, we appreciate you coming in.
Alright, thank you.
You can stay or go, Mark, and then if you just wanna call the office tomorrow and get with me. But you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting or head out either way. Do you have the water tower thing, Dr. Bob?
I don't have it on, ma'am.
Is that the bike? That's the thing you got, boys.
Every three or five years, when you get that tower inspected, you know, it's a really good time to be inspected. If they had all of this water breaks and such, it makes you feel better to know there's not much of sediment in the bottom of our tower.
We have, oh, is that the tank out, the plant that we have somebody?
We have this water tower inspected since I think there are a couple of times, but we are.
I took it a since a couple of years ago.
Yeah, that's right. We've had a plant inspected with a load inspection, but not natural in the tower.
Hold that file, I can't remember how long it was that it was over.
It's almost five. It's been done since I've been on the council. And I think that's five years.
Oh, wow, okay.
I think it was only a couple of years ago.
That's what I thought, I remember it being that, but what has been during my time in there.
And either way, we have had a lot of, I mean, water breaks and things have disturbed this and they run into the highway.
So what happens when they get in there and do that? Is that a dive in and?
There's a ROV inspection, it's option $1,000, it's a remote operated vehicle. And a little mini submarine are down inside there. I believe that's what we did last time. They dropped these cars in and put them down. Because we've got to clean the first last couple of spots. And in cleaning out, they have a $2,500 staff. And we take us shutting that tower down, draining it down, and pressurizing the lines. I think we'd have to do a little bit more research before I felt 100% comfortable to tell you that I'm able to.
We drain it out and do all that, and that means we're in oil water for how long?
I don't know, that's some of the stuff that I'll have to check on because we wouldn't necessarily lose line pressure. I would have a pump running, just isolate the tower, do the valves, and open that hydrant so that drains the tower.
Still would still be.
But we would still be feeding the tower line from the water. But I need to play some research or research to make sure that's possible before I begin. And I think K.R. D.A. has certain things that they could make available to be in that process.
With that question, are you ready to just clarify? What would be the advantage or disadvantage, or the advantage is to do an option two of rocks? More thorough inspection?
So the option two is they're just banking on their being sediment in there to clean out. There's gotta be something they can clean regardless, but this is banking on their being. Last time when they inspected, there was only about an inch of the bottom.
I'm very concerned looking if even if we did one inch, we're only looking at three thousand bucks.
If you do one, then there's a problem that we're gonna do.
So with all the problems we have.
I would say that'd be stacking a lot more on the place at our current time than I'm comfortable saying we can do.
Is this something we wanna do before changing towers to rest of the dump down here or do we wait till after dump down here?
It doesn't make that matter, but I think it's more of a concern of, I would like to have it in sooner rather than later to see what is in there.
In all the disturbances we have.
That's where they play. Shouldn't be a bunch more after the project, but it could be.
So maybe it's something we can just get the ROV in there to see what we've gotten.
It's not gonna remove anything, all it's gonna do is show you what's been there.
We're just submarine, little control submarine.
I like the idea of knowing them.
Done the question, what did they do, go down and put a rudder in the bottom of it?
Now it's a video camera.
I mean, how does it tell how deep that is?
Because you could see inside of there, there's actually a hump that's about this tall. And so stuff has to come up, so if there is, there can be sediment in there about that deep because the water has a trough, that whole bottom. If you look up, you can see it coming back up. So that's a little trap kind of deal. And I'm curious if there isn't more than last time, if we have some of these coloration additions after. I think if we're $1,000 to get a look, get your guts in the ROV, we're playing it as, you know, it's 35 persons for 25.
Knowledge of that one.
Hopefully, we don't have to do anything else than what they checked off the list.
I make a motion, we approve option one for Viking industrial painting to do a visual and ROV inspection for water tower.
Motion made by Kevin, seconded by Roman. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All in favor, motion carried. Which one do you have? Oh, plus the tire thing that you said I have on these, right? You referred to this with tires.
The one you have with outside, listen, I brought over the one with tires.
Okay, so with tires. And then with tires, 1931?
Because they only have two tires, I think.
And this is the blue dump truck, right? Did it do a little routine maintenance? So you need a little routine maintenance.
Didn't make an awful lot of noise in the rear end, wish like a drive shaft, it turns out one of the wheel bearings affects out also.
Yeah.
Typically, you do them both at the same time.
So he's adding what to this, that's the?
Two tires because they didn't catch the belt shown on the inside of one of them. So he'll need an alignment after.
You said this was the dump truck?
Yes, yes.
Blue, John drives along.
The newest truck. We left the bulletproof moment, drove it back to the guy.
That's not gonna hold up.
Helped that. Boy, I don't mean to get hurt. Everything else, we haven't checked each part.
The engine itself.
Yeah. You know, I don't think it's been driven enough to cook everything in here.
Yeah. And you guys feel about getting this work done?
It's back at our door now, so it's not in his way, but.
And is this the one you use for standing?
Can he get it back in and get it done?
It's probably what it's called. He made it sound like he'd get it right back in. We moved it out this morning, initially, put some roof in there until it got the incident.
Yeah, and we've got, we've got about a week to show a piece of weather. You're not gonna get it for that, you gotta get it done, I would think. So you might add like an extra seventy, give it the tax.
No tax.
Okay, I was making sure you didn't put it on here. For an alignment, if you use, well, if he's doing the rear end, you won't need an alignment.
Well, he was talking about.
Well, because things, the tires are wearing.
You think you need an alignment because of the wear.
Okay, so you might, I'd really like to them to bucks for an alignment, but might do another, add a hundred just in case. Can you vote to that, I think it's twenty, thirty-one? Or whatever number sounds good for, even number for a motion, whoever's motion.
I move that we accept the proposal for the two thousand six four three fifty Super Duty to go in and get the work on the project done at the cost of two thousand, two thousand thirty-one dollars at Dunham Auto Enterprises.
Not to deceive. Second, motion made by Ron, second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All in favor, motion is carried. Was there anything else?
Let's agree a hundred things else.
Oh, well, we're talking with Dustin today, tractor's done. I don't know if you got up there to get the things, but the discussion is still good. They. Five thousand, this is what we motion for, if they, the rest of the work, we're gonna, we're gonna be thorough on making sure we got records for warranty period. And we discuss that, anything happen, we call up the media, we'll get somebody to look.
Standard starter works, but there's other things that are broken on the standard, so probably have to get carburetor a hundred and twenty dollars for it. We're gonna change, we've actually got some changes, so. So it's like we got two starters because they get real rusty, that's all, no matter how good you clean it, it's gonna rust out so bad.
Two of them was less than the.
Yeah. They were cheaper than we thought, so.
And still that change went over, so now we have.
Carburetor, it, nothing moves, butterflies don't move, nothing, so it's about three hundred bucks. I gotta score it long to see if they got any hot water, but after the carburetor, rebuilding that chain, drag chain, we should actually did. We got plenty of warm weather for you to.
Yes, go utilize it and get it done ahead of time so we're not doing it in the cold.
And I assume that's what they're waiting on, to have it move back from R V R. Dex did Brian earlier today, tried to pull it off this last week, but I haven't heard from him yet, so I'll try to get it tomorrow. But hopefully this weather utilized. Was a little thirty-two, it's kind of.
Yeah.
We'll see. Anything else for me?
Nothing else, but, alright, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Disagreement in resolution.
This is a call from Lynn Atkinson, that's the senior emergency management director. Uh, they just think about a new resolution for burn bans, and so he has reached out to us. That way, what it does is, like our burn permit that we have here, people come in and fill them out and that's all that happens with them. And then they're supposed to call in the county and let them know that they're burning. That by adopting this resolution, it'll take out that part of it, and the county will do all the burn, or burn permits.
Would the fire department still be able to issue those burn permits? Cause I know I've definitely like mine before from the fire department.
See, and I thought we had this discussion before, and because it's the county that issues the burn ban, all permits were supposed to come from the fire department. I didn't think the city was even supposed to have them. Cause I've always got mine from the fire department.
Yeah, we may issue them, that's pretty cool.
You thought it just blew away with the?
So if we, and that's what.
Does it, this is doing?
Yeah.
You cannot change the city code by resolution, it takes an ordinance. And so this, this should not be a resolution adopting a county resolution. Should be ordinance modifying your city code provision, so question. This, this was brought to me with, you know, prepared language. I typically do not prepare ordinance unless the council directs me to. Otherwise, this would have been available in the form of ordinance where you all take action on tonight. But you are the ones that direct me to act, and so if you do want to revoke the provisions of city code section seven two oh one that instruct me to prepare ordinance, and I'll have it ready for you if you want to.
Is that something you need a motion for, or consensus?
No, if I have a consensus directing me, yeah, let's do this, I'll have it ready for you guys to take action next, now council meeting.
How does council feel about moving forward on an ordinance change? So we got a consensus?
Yeah, what is or per, or the city, I don't have it.
Burning yardways, leaves, twigs, brush, and small branches is allowed within state limits, a burning permit must be obtained by pretty often before burning. It shall be unlawful to burn trash, rubbish, log, straw, or under combustible material in any street, alley, or neighborhood. I've seen them burning.
What are the fire limits? I don't understand the, the verb expire limits. Within the fire limits? What does that mean? And then in seven two oh three, it says inside the fire limits of the city, I don't know what fire limits are.
That should be the jurisdictional boundaries of the city.
So in the city limits?
Yeah, within the city limits. I would think that is what was intended, but this creates.
Phil, did you approve this consensus on the ordinance change order?
Yes.
So Tom, you have a consensus from all council, if you would have to grab something up. Please, and then we'll see about reviewing. About to take an action after our next meeting.
Can I ask another question? Okay, on this open burning, we discussed the blue bracket. Last sentence says, are within five feet of any building in the city, so you can't stack? You can't burn within five feet of a building. Okay, okay.
I have this one.
Oh, the third one says you can't stack hay or straw within five hundred feet of any building.
So what?
It can't bomb anything. Oh, okay, well, it's just cause I know somebody who put a bunch of straws into their house for insulation.
Not here, but that lived trailers elsewhere that.
Yeah.
Stacking around.
Insulation.
Stating of trailer house or a lot of them.
A lot of people.
Insulation, yeah, okay.
Stack around dog houses and stuff.
Generally, they don't continue this, but they'll forget. Starting.
Yeah, um, this is what, this is on the kids' municipalities website that they suggested adopting, but it dropped it or, I don't know, from twenty-five hundred, five hundred, we weren't sure. And if you need time to look at them before you do it at the next meeting.
Typically, we look back to your last incorporating ordinance.
Okay.
Because there's usually some language in there that you really want.
Okay, I'll, we'll send that to you then.
Yeah.
Don't worry.
I'll send it to Tom Shannon.
Was there anything else, were you doing on burn ban or?
Alright, reimburse that.
On the cleaning of the city hall?
Well, oh, I'm sorry, you are correct, Cheryl, I just get the point. I was trying to. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, sorry.
Uh, when we hired Gloria, we talked about carting out every two weeks to see how it goes with all of the rain and mud and, like, we already had our first tracking with salt and everything, and really weekly would be nice. So we just wanted to bring it back up to see if we could have Gloria come in legally instead of for home, I think, for the winter months.
So just you just let her know if you needed her?
What do you think until like April first?
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping.
Like, like just through January, February, March, I don't think.
Yeah.
For the next three months. Sorry, so April first. Do you guys listen? So you know that?
So do you furnish all the stuff she tends with, or does she bring her own? We furnish it all.
And that's playing with the hardback, I'm just, I'll finish everything.
Okay. I just wondered.
Will you go and make any action on this?
Follow with promotion?
Yes.
Yes, it's being promoted, that's why we want to make action.
Uh, make promotion to through the month of. So April first, the twenty-sixth, the big weekly cleanings of Seagull, three forty dollars clean.
Alright, second. Motion made by Chad and second by Ron. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All in favor, motion carried. Now we'll go to reimburse that request.
And since last council meeting, we did authorize Emily to go to this, and we would pay her mileage. I make a motion that we reimburse her the ninety-three sixty-eight that she spent going to Garnet.
Motion made by Cheryl. Yes, sir. Second by Ron. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All in favor, motion carried. Got some extension requests?
There was one added that you guys do not have, and they will pay on January sixth.
So the one, two, three, four, five, total extension request then?
Make a motion that we approve all six extension requests.
Motion made by Cheryl. Second by Barbara. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Two of these are really high. Is that normal? These aren't multi-months or?
Yeah, they can, they're like that every month.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All in favor, motion carried. There. The, anything off the agenda or follow up? Uh, do you think there's some F Y I in the folder?
A lot of glitter.
Green, green cards.
Lot of glitter.
Um, have the bills opened? Looked in?
Yeah. So let's make a motion, we looked at, we looked at bills.
Motion by Kevin, second by Ron. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. There's nothing else, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry, motion by Cheryl, second by Chad. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All in favor, motion to adjourn, carried at eight sixteen.